Right, or can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Great, yes, we can hear you clearly.
Thank you.
Looks like I'm there twice. Is there a reason why? I see two Councilor Penomarats. One looks like me.
We can never get enough Councilor Penomaros.
Yeah, so that looks like the name. No, that's me. I don't know who that is. It's in. I see myself, yes. Yeah, that one. Looks like a screen.
Could it be Pesteza? Double Penomara minus Pesteza?
Yep.
So I texted, let's see. He usually gets in a few minutes late because of his job when we have a study session, so I'm expecting him because he has not said otherwise. He doesn't like these 5:30. It's harder for him to get to. So I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at 5:34. Roll call, please.
Council Penomar.
Here.
Counselor Ryder.
Here.
Counselor Pesteza is not present. Counselor Byers.
Here.
And Counselor Parry.
Here.
Mayor, give a forum.
Thank you, Hector. Dave, we're just gonna go ahead and hand it right over to you.
Okay.
Let me just call it. So the next item is discussion on council rules. Dave?
Okay, I was asked way back last fall to look at our council rules regarding decorum. And I started doing that and discovered there were a number of other areas that probably need to be looked at, agreed upon, updated in some cases. So this turned into a sort of major document. It's not, there are not radical changes to the current council rules, but there are some changes. And one of the changes is prompted by the hybrid rules that we as a council adopted towards the end of the COVID restrictions. And then also, it's informed by an amendment to the open meetings law that the legislature adopted to be effective in January of 2022, which is after we adopted our hybrid meeting rules. And we really haven't addressed that, those hybrid rules since then. And there are some changes that we need to make there for sure. I am gonna involve Hector in these discussions probably a lot because there are some questions about what's feasible. And he can explain much better than I can what we can and can't do in terms of our current technology and space and so on. The there's a lot to cover here. And I imagine we're not going to get it all done tonight. But I think if we just go kind of page by page, we'll go in kind of logical order and and eventually get to the end. The most changes are at the front end of this document. So some of the kind of hardest work that we will have will be tonight. I received some comments from Counselor Penomaroff that were very helpful. She caught some things that needed attention. And I'm sure there are some others in here as well. So I urge you to speak up. And what I'm gonna do is put on the screen, my screen that shows the proposed council rules. Can we get, can we get the, cover the whole screen with that somehow? So it's easier to read from the.
We'll see this on our Zoom screen as well. Is that right, Hector?
You should be able to know. Is it a full screen?
You can adjust the screen as you like.
Gotcha. I can see all of that except for the stuff to the right. Can I blow it up with my? Oh, yeah. Okay, I can do that. Great. All right, perfect. Thank you, Hector.
And I need some help too, Hector, to be able to see my comments on my screen. Can I rid of that? Okay. All right, so taking it from the top, if we, if what I propose to do is take this in chunks. And the first chunk would be that section one, A, B, C, and D. If you want to just take a second to look those over, and then we can tackle them. But I want to give you a chance to.
This is the same stuff that you sent to us in our packet.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
So I just want to check in with the council about how we want to go through this. Previously, what we've done and what's worked well is just to go through it section by section. Have you explained to us what changes you're proposing? Allow us to ask questions as we go. But if the council prefers a different process, I'm certainly open to hearing that. I think the last time we did this was in 2018, so not everybody, 2018 or 2019, not everybody was here at that time. So does that sound, Counselor?
So this is just a, just a counter, a counterproposal would be, I see this is going to be more than one session because this is very dense and there are new aspects. I know that sometimes I don't have the time to read. I actually did this time. Sometimes don't have the time to read through everything. I'm wondering if we could just maybe just ask question if people, people have prepared questions or as we go through in order, we could ask those and then maybe take a second task. Maybe that's what you were suggesting. I don't know.
I think I am suggesting that, but that we start, I would like to start off. I mean, I think, is there anybody here who hasn't had time to read it?
Well, I think my preference would be that if there's a change that's been made, we talk about it. Even if it's just Dave saying, I made this change and this is why. I just want to make sure that we're not missing anything.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
So we go through each section. You have an opportunity to just discuss overview.
Right.
Discuss any changes you're proposing and why. And then we'll open those sections up to questions. Right? Okay.
Okay, first chunk would be that, that section one, A, B, C, and D, which don't make significant changes other than in C, where it's, it is saying that the commissions and committees should follow these same rules unless we accept, you know, expressly accept them from the rules. And that I know is a, that's sort of a big ask for the councils and commissions. And Counselor Penomaroff pointed that out in her comments back to me. But we do have uncertainty, I think, among some of our commissions as to which rules they're supposed to be following. Under state law, they're supposed to be following Robert's Rules of Order unless the city provides some other set of procedures to follow. And some of the council or some of the commissions have in their own creation ordinance, some language about the rules that they can follow. Others don't. So maybe some discussion about that in this section in terms of what you think works best for the commissions that you have would be useful.
Counselor Penomar.
I have a question. I am not clear on what the state rules as far as hybrid meetings go, what the requirements are. And I was wondering if you could clear that up for me. And because if it applies to committee meetings, committees as well, then some of my objections, it might be a matter of state law rather than council.
Yeah, good, good question. And I meant to start with that in my introduction. Those new, that new amendment to, or the open meetings law says basically two things. Any public body and any governing body, and the way it defines those, you, the council is both a public body and a governing body, and so is anybody that makes recommendations to the council. So that covers all of your commissions. And it says that they, all these public bodies are to provide some form of online, online access. Not necessarily participation. We'll get to that in a minute. But if it is reasonably possible to do so. So that proviso about reasonably possible to do so is, hasn't been tested about how, what that really means. And I have made inquiries among other city attorneys around the state. And basically, other jurisdictions are all over the place. And understandably, some of them, like Phoenix has just recently redone, you know, got a, got a new city hall, city council chambers. So they put all this electronic stuff in there and they can pretty easily accommodate these new rules. Ashland has the advantage of having RV TV cover their, their meetings and they're able to use them to deal with compliance with this new provision in state law fairly easily. Some other cities, including some cities in the valley here, have said, we just haven't figured out how to do this. And we're not complying right now. And we're just saying because we can't figure it out, it's not reasonably possible right now. So, and others have said, well, that it's, it's participation or it's, it's access to these public body meetings by electronic means that includes just audio. And so some folks are just doing audio. So it really is right now all over the map. The second provision goes beyond just allowing access. That is allowing the public from online to observe the meetings. It says if in-person testimony is allowed by the general public, then that, then you have to allow online public testimony. Again, if it's reasonably possible to do so. That gets more complicated. That gets into our hybrid meeting questions. But once again, that phrase, to the extent reasonably possible, is one that we're probably going to have to take into account because there are going to be some areas where maybe we, maybe it's not reasonably possible for us right now with the equipment we have or the facilities we have.
Okay, I saw a question from Counselor Byers.
Oh, I answered it.
Oh, you did? Oh, well done. Thank you. Any other questions? I have a real quick question about, I think it's, it's, we are talking about Oregon House Bill 2158. Is that the number of it?
Yeah, get it out of my briefcase just a second.
Yeah, I'm just going off of memory on that question. Hang on. I don't think that's the right number. Oh, yeah, 20, yeah, okay, it is a different number. So 2560. I have a clarifying question. I, you know, I've had recent discussions with the resident about this. And let me turn around here.
Start at three. That's what's new, the emboldened language.
So one of the things that, that I, I have, I'm gonna have a question about, and we'll get some clarification on, is that in some of the meetings, we're having an ongoing issue with people just raising their hands in the middle of the meeting. And what, what I understand this to mean is that if you, if you provide for a process in a live meeting, you must also do in a, so are we able to craft our rules in such a way that whatever process we had, we decide to provide for in a live meeting during this process of council writing, we would provide that same process with whatever provisions we need to do for, you know, the technical, for example, just as an example, what occurs to me is we, our, our rules have been that when you come in, you go, you sign up for a speaker's request form, we get the speaker request forms. And when those items come up, we call up the speakers and they come forward and they speak. We don't take speaker request forms throughout the evening. We don't take them after the meeting, after the item is closed. We don't go back and revisit items for speaker request forms. There's all kinds of reasons, nor do you take raised hands from the audience. Right. And so because what it does is it sort of promotes like argument on some level, it can, it has. So what, what I want to find out from this is whatever, whatever system we set up in our council rules for taking speaker request forms and honoring, you know, our practice for as long as I can remember of taking speaker request forms, can we emulate that exact process and still be in compliance here? Like, do we have to, do we have to have a different provision for this?
No, you don't. Basically, what is, this is saying is whatever you provide for in-person testimony, you have to also provide for online testimony to the extent reasonably possible.
Right.
And then maybe sometimes on that proviso, as I mentioned.
I, that's how I read it. I just wanted to clarify it. Okay, thank you.
And we'll talk, we'll talk more about that when we get to those questions.
Exactly.
Okay.
And that was why I asked that. Did you have a, do you want to add to the conversation, Hector?
That, briefly, when we were all on Zoom, including the council and attendees, we had a process where residents would send an email to public testimony@cityattentat.org. And up till, well, basically five o'clock, we would log those, those emails and those requests. Then we would deliver them to you at the beginning of the meeting. But now that we're in person and attendees are online, we kind of went away from that since people were attending in person to address council. So that process exists.
Yes.
And actually, that's the process that's provided for in the current hybrid rules adopted in 20, September, I think of 2022, or 20, maybe 21.
But I, I understand that whatever it is we're doing live, we have to at least match that in in virtual, in virtual process, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And it comes up partly because there are times when you, mayor, have, during the course of a meeting, there's a lot of conversation going on and you, you end up saying, okay, if somebody hasn't put in this, put in a speaker request form yet, we're still gonna allow somebody to, to talk. And if you do that, you have to allow that online as well.
Which I would and have.
Yeah.
And, and I also understand as providing officer, that's my prerogative to do that. But
Correct.
It's when, when, if, if it were ever to be a case where I would do it for live but not for Zoom, which has never happened, in that scenario, that's where we go afoul. And that's what I'm trying to clarify, is that we have to at least match what we're doing. Okay, that's gonna help our conversation moving forward. Counselor Byers?
I'm gonna save this till we dive further into that process. I don't want to. I feel like that's another layer of conversation and you're trying to get through some stuff. So I'll get my question.
Yeah. And I just want to clarify that it's not a regular thing that, that I open up speaker requests, you know, on the fly like that. But there have been some extenuating circumstances where I've done that. So.
Right.
All right. Any other questions on this item?
Well, so with respect, with respect to C and rules for the, the commissions, if you have any thoughts on how that should be phrased, what, what the rule, what we ought to say for them, and maybe that's something to sort of bracket and come back to as we look at the existing ordinances concerning those commissions. But if you have any particular thoughts about that, the, I'd be interested in hearing it now.
Counselor Penomar.
Yeah, I already shared them with Dave. But yeah, I'm worried about the committees and commissions being able to function if there's things that just don't really apply to them. Specifically quorum. Right now, there's quorum of four, which I have another question about. But I think we would need to kind of go over it with a fine tooth comb to make sure that, and I think it's unlikely that the committees and commissions would need everything in here. So I kind of, I like the idea of having this be guidelines to committees and commissions. And then maybe separating out what we really want to make sure committees and commissions do. I'm just afraid of hampering the committees.
And it may be that this sort of prompts us to go back and look at those ordinances regarding particular commissions. Some of them have their own ordinances, some of them don't. And what we could say is look at the existing ordinances and say, this is what we wanted to say about procedural rules. And then have another ordinance for everybody else that says maybe something different.
Yeah.
It's that way we can fine tune it to those particular needs of those particular commissions.
Counselor Penomar.
And I just want to add that the bylaws, also all of our committees, commissions, or most of them, I guess, have bylaws as well. They would have to be clear, you know, which supersedes. I do know that, I think all the committees and commissions want to do the right things and they would love to have a model to work off of. But I think it would really just pretty much stop their regular business if they had to deal with this right away.
I also want to just say, so that there isn't any misinformation, that all of our committee commissions either have an ordinance or they have a resolution. And, and that there are, I think what started this conversation was that all of the bylaws, we have to have all been adopted by the council, but they're inconsistent. And I think that's really what started this conversation.
Right, right.
Yeah. I mean, they're, they're lawful and they're adopted. They're just inconsistent. Got it.
So what I'm taking away from this discussion is I probably want to look at C right now and see about opening it up and referring to other documents that we may want to adjust in the future.
I will tell you that there is, there are unintended consequences when we just mirror. And, and example of that is mirroring council rules of procedure over to Tora. We, we tried to do that and there were, there were some issues, there were some inconsistencies that that actually caused. So we can discuss that further if it comes up in this discussion, but it, it made, it made for some awkward, yeah, combination of what, what comes out of their ordinances in combination with ours. That is weird.
Okay, if there are no further questions on that section one or comments, let's move to section two A, kind of a big chunk about quorum. And in that area, Counselor Penomar pointed out an error I made in the third sentence. I say a quorum consists of at least four current counselors. That's not really right. It should be, consists of a majority of the non-vacant council seats.
Right.
Yeah, but.
I thought you were changing it. I was like, no.
And of course, as I mentioned at our last meeting, that, well, we have a council vacancy right now. That means a quorum is three council members. But you might want to take a quick look at, at that whole section two A and see if you have any other comments or questions.
Counselor Penomar.
Yeah, so I shared this with you as well, Dave. So what happened, I think in, in January one year, when there was some turnover, is the interim city manager was desperately on the phone trying to get people who had been voted out of office to come to the meeting. Is uh, the interim city manager was desperately on the phone trying to get people who'd been voted out of office to come to the meeting. So, so, you know, and I just think they're, you know, that's, that's silly. I, there should be um, a, a legal way of uh, you know, if you have councillors elect. On deck, they're ready to participate, they should be counted towards quorum, or there should be some sort of administrative mechanism. To get them sworn in so that. You know, things don't fall apart when there's a uh, a large turnover and of, of council.
And I would suggest on that, that the way to do it is, is the second way you suggest, that is get them sworn in.
Perfect.
As soon as possible. Uh, before that first meeting in, in January. And you, there's, you have flexibility to do that.
To, I wonder if there's anything in the charter about that? Of the swearing in. It might, I think there's something about the first meeting in January, but I. I could, I could be wrong, and I don't always remember if I'm reading the charter or some other rule.
I am not recalling something like that.
Okay, but I, I love that idea. Uh, yeah, so if the charter would allow it, I, I would love that idea of getting sworn in prior to the first meeting. So that we would have forum.
Yeah, there's no requirement, uh, unless there is something that I'm missing from the charter, there's no requirement.
Not sure.
That that be done at a. Uh, regular council meeting, it could be done. An hour before or two days before or whatever.
We're calling the same language that I think Counselor Penomera is.
I am as well.
Yeah, so.
Huh. Well, I will, uh, I will double check on that, we may have to adjust this somehow as well.
Mayor.
Uh, Counselor Perry Miller.
Can I just, so I'm trying to, I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand what you're saying, are you talking about a mechanism that would make it so that? Uh. Councillors wouldn't be able to like deny this body from having a quorum to conduct business? Because if, if a number of councillors resigned. They could deny a quorum and then business couldn't be conducted, is that what you're talking about?
No, um, that's another situation, I haven't really thought that one through, um. I think this is a situation where there's no, nobody's intending to deny anything, it's just that people are voted out of office. So they're technically still on council, so you have councillors A, B, and C that were replaced, say. They're technically still uh, in the last election, and maybe they moved away or something. So technically in January, they're still on council. And um, but they're not there. So quorum is four. And you only have the three people, um. So that was, that was just an awkward situation that happened.
Thank you.
I do want to just make sense. Pin in a discussion that just came up, in the event that uh, the city is left without a quorum for some reason. I do think we should review. Uh, what? What process? Could take place? To get enough people installed to make a quorum, so that business can continue immediately. Mm-hmm.
Yes, and I, there. Uh, there is a provision in state law for that, and I can't recall what it is, I think it might be that uh, the county. Yeah. Can appoint somebody temporarily.
I'm wondering, yes, and um, I'll be right with the council buyers, um, I, I do wonder, um. Uh. If, I mean, I think that's, that's a good provision, I think it subjects us to um, some timing issues and. Um, we're watching that play out, I think, so um. I do, if there is a provision within our city that we could affect, I don't think we're subject to that provision. I think, as I understand it, that provision is what's in place. If we don't have our own rules, um, I may have read it wrong, um, but if that's the case, uh. Uh, this is moot, if it's not the case, I think that having a provision within the city that, uh, that. Where we could. Uh, build up a forum again so that business can continue, uh, we should review that and see what the other options are if there, if there are any. I'm gonna take council buyers next.
Aren't we, so, and I'm misremembering the fact that, hey. A, a term starts when you are sworn in, in January. Of whatever year, and then it ends on December thirty-first, a four years later. For Talon City Council, so aren't we just automatically set up for uh, an issue where we do not actually have? A full city council for that first meeting in January? To swear people in?
I'll just say that I, I'm not sure that that's the case, I don't think we would have run into that situation, what you're saying is logical. But I'm afraid the replacement happens with the swearing in. Um, but your point is well taken.
I do think the terms end on December thirty-first of four years.
Oh, that would make sense.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so I think we're actually like meeting to just address this in general, because there's a lag between.
Definitely.
December thirty-first and when the first meeting of.
Call it the, the January rule.
Yeah.
But um. If it's in the charter, I think it's just a matter of. Of having to make sure that we design. Our procedures in a way that we're getting everybody sworn in at the first, I think it's the first regular meeting.
It is.
What I think it is.
Yeah.
So that means that it's the first Wednesday of the year, no matter what.
But that means some councillors have had their term and.
Right.
And they.
And there's a period of time where there might not be a quorum.
Yeah.
Um, but. I don't think that matters unless you're in a regular meeting.
Got it, I know what you're saying, thank you.
Okay, well, I have some work to do on, on uh, section two A. Uh. If you'd look, then uh, if you're ready to move on to section. Uh, two, B, and C regarding regular meetings and special meetings. Um. I don't believe. We have any uh. Any changes there. Um. But if you have comments, please speak up.
Counselor Penomera.
I just had a question, I, I see that, you know, we were, we tend to respect the rule um, of ten PM, no, in no event later than ten PM. But I wonder that since it's in the council rules, we could suspend the rules and go after ten PM. If we as a body decided to do that. Is that correct? Okay, I just wanted that, because we've always said ten PM, we cannot go past it, actually, we can't. It's kind of a self-imposed rule.
Yeah, all of these, all of these rules uh, are. Susceptible to being suspended. Um. Uh.
By a vote of majority?
Yeah, by majority vote, yeah.
Mayor.
Counselor Karen Miller.
So rules can be suspended by a majority vote, the charter cannot ever be suspended under any circumstances.
Well, unless the voters approve.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I guess my question would be, this is listed in here, but is it also listed in the charter, or is that too detailed?
It's not listed in the charter.
In fact, the charter only requires us to meet once a month. In a regular meeting.
Okay, if there's no further comments there, moving on to uh. Think if we take the next chunk as sections. D, E, F, and G, uh, over to the top of page four. Uh. There are not many changes in that area, but if you want to take a minute to scan those and see if you have any comments. I know councillor Penoma has uh, has uh.
Yeah.
At least one.
Can we scroll the screen?
Oh, right, I, I think I.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Uh, councillor, uh, Brighter?
Yeah, sorry, this is gonna be going back, I, because I don't think you can see my hand, so this is about the last, uh, with the ten PM, the nine thirty and the ten PM. Um, this is more of a, a question, not as much. Related to a change or anything, but um, if someone can't stay past nine thirty. Um. Does that? Cause, ca- can that person just be excused and then um? As long as there's still a quorum? Does that? How does that work? I've never seen it happen with us, but I'm. You know, babysitters and all that, so I gotta start. Figuring out how that will work if I do have to leave at nine thirty.
Right, I think I understand, uh, assuming a quorum still remains after that person leaves, the meeting can still go on.
Okay.
Um, if the quorum dissolves with that person leaving, then the only thing that can happen is to uh. Set a time for a new, for the next meeting and adjourn.
I've seen that happen, been years, but I've seen that happen where. The quorum was lost when somebody had to go, so.
Right.
Okay, thank you so much.
And it would just be noted in the minutes.
Right.
When that councillor left.
Correct. So uh, looking at uh, basically. The rest of page three, starting with D, near the top of the page and going over to the very top of page four. Um. Um. D two. Uh, I think Counselor Penomera had some uh, suggested wording that I think is better than mine.
Aw, thanks, well, no, I just, I really appreciated the uh, the explanations of what you technically had to do. To um, to kind of mimic what happens in real life. Um, and, and because I know that technology changes and sometimes we don't get uh, all the detail, technical details. Right, for this particular software and all of that, my suggestion was to basically um, take out all the uh, specific instructions. Technological instructions and uh, what did I say? Um, to uh, when council enters executive session, for example. Um, remote participation from the public will be suspended. And then blah, 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 and then when the, when council comes back, remote participation will be resumed. So just the idea that whatever we're doing remotely, so that doesn't, you know, kind of handcuff us to cut this feed and do this and not do this or the other thing. Especially because those are what our technology is right now, it might be something different in the future.
Right.
Like just our AI assistant.
Well, I use the word feed and a couple of other sort of.
Which I think is accurate.
Current terms.
Current term, currently accurate.
Suggested broader language that would apply even if feed becomes passe.
Yeah.
Um, so uh. I'm certainly gonna welcome those comments and next iteration will, will have that sort of broader language, but the concept remains the same.
And did you mention what that broader language was?
Uh. Looking at D two. Um, when council uh, enters executive session. Remote participation from the public will be suspended. And members of the council who are present in person will be required to leave council chambers for the duration of the executive session. So. Deleted a few words and added broader language, and then the next sentence. Somewhat similarly, uh, her suggestion is upon return to open session, members of the public will be welcomed back into council chambers. And the remote uh, participation will be unmuted and the video. Will be turned back on.
And my suggestion was that um. Uh. Instead of the remote feed, uh, et cetera, just re- remote participation will be resumed.
Resumed, right.
Yeah, so just.
Resume, that's clear.
You could change it anyway, but just the idea that this would happen, we're not gonna say. How it happens.
Right.
Um, I have a, a quick question on this section, um. There is a provision that allows um, the council to decide who is um, in the meeting and who's not. Other than what is in our charter, right, I think it's the city. City manager and maybe the city attorney, but if the, if. I don't remember the exact language, I can take a quick look, but if the council decided they wanted to have an officer. Or, you know, uh, somebody from one of the departments attend the meeting, there's, there's an ability for us to take a vote. And I think it's by majority. Um, I don't think one person can make that decision, I think we have to make a majority decision, and I think that language is in the charter, but I can't. I think it is. Um. Or maybe it's the ORS, but should we specify, do you think we should specify that in the? Um, rules, I have seen it in other rules.
Um. I, I think we should, I thought we did, but maybe not. I think you do want to, certainly there are times when you. Want to have an invited guest participate in an executive session. Um. And whether that's somebody on staff or even somebody external to the city. Uh, sometimes you need that, uh, sort of outside expertise.
Yeah, the only, the only person that's explicitly allowed to participate is the city manager per the charter. Um, but. Uh, but I know that there are times when, I mean, I've seen times in the twenty-three years that I've served this community that, uh, where. Uh, other attorneys have been invited into, I just wonder if we should outline how that works in this, in the rules.
I think that's a, a good idea. And one question that has come up uh, in the past is about the city recorder being in executive sessions. Um, and um. It's. At least in my experience, it's hard to have an executive session without a city recorder there. Because they're the keeper of the, the public record. And they need to be able to know, for example, when the executive session ends. Uh, so that people can be invited, uh, and the general public can be invited back in. Um. So uh, and at least, I'm gonna propose, and you can discuss that when we come back and look at new wording. I'm gonna propose that we clarify this invited guest issue. And, and also uh, make clear that the city manager, city attorney, and the uh, the city recorder. Um. Would be allowed to participate in executive sessions as well.
Well, given the fact that, I mean, given, given that there are times when um, when we've used other attorneys. For example, like we've used HR attorneys and that kind of thing. Um. With city manager issues in the past, where it's not always the case where we've had the city recorder and this, and um, and the city attorney. Um, just because it's a staff issue, um, I would just want to have the provision to bring folks to the. Table rather than write people in that would have to be disinvited. Um, if that, if the council wanted to, to have only. Uh, only a member. Um. I would, I, I just think it's, it's more positive to put it in the um, in terms of who. Who the charter explicitly allows, and then any other persons are by this process. That's just my thought, I would like to see language in both, in both ways, um, just so that the council can make that decision. Um, based on. Um, your recommendations and, and also the way I've seen it work in this, in this, in different contexts.
Right. Okay, I will uh. Bring that back to you with, with both those alternatives. Uh, any other? Um. Any other comments uh? Down to F, F brings us into this hybrid meeting question. Um.
Can we scroll down?
Uh, yo, I'm sorry.
I mean, I can go to my own copy if that, that would be easier. But actually, since audiences here, we should probably, I'll just continue to remind you.
Um. The uh. After, well, I, I misspoke a little bit, uh. The first part of F is, is about uh, council members being asked uh. If, if at all possible to let the council know. Um, forty-eight hours in advance if they're not uh, going to be in person at the meeting. Um, and uh. Either not participating or, or participating uh, online.
Can I just make one comment? I've, I, I find that uh, shallow endeavor is a little bit of an oxymoron, um. And uh, I just think you could just say should provide. Um, such notice. I mean, there are times where emergencies happen.
Right, you couldn't, couldn't know at forty-eight hours in advance sometimes. But yes, I can make that change. Um.
Counselor Penoma.
And I just, and the, and the reason for the, the word, we, we've learned. And I just, and the and the reason for the the word, we we've learned the word shall is important. It's basically binding to us, right? And that's whereas the word should is not.
Right.
Thanks.
And then in F one, that's where we get into the remote participation. And uh this re- this sort of limitation on remote participation by council members, no more than five times per year unless uh council specifically approves going beyond that. That was what was in our, the hybrid rules uh that the council adopted back in 2022. And I'm I'm not sure what what the reasonable number is, but I just picked that one because that was so you 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 adopted before.
Counselor.
Um I just don't really know. I mean, I remember this, but I don't know where we came up with the number five. It seems strange to even have a number listed, especially if it's something that could easily be changed or suspended.
Uh councillor fires?
Agreed. I think especially as we as a council are trying to shape something that is uh shaped policy that is supportive of diversity and inclusivity, that having a number like that is kind of antithetical to those efforts.
Any other comments?
I will say, kind of the devil's advocate to that uh argument to that is uh having watched hybrid meetings during the COVID time of uh other elected bodies. I think it's fair to say, and you'll see I've mentioned that somewhere later here, uh that in-person meetings tend to foster more collaboration, more compromise, more active listening than than uh online meetings. And to and to the extent you allow more online meetings, you have less of a cohesive body. I think that's uh uh what a lot of people found during the COVID period. So I think that's a factor to think about.
Council buyers?
To that point, I I don't think removing a restriction of numbers means that automatically a governing body will shift to only doing on Zoom. I just think it allows more flexibility for an individual member of that governing body to balance things that need to be balanced, especially as a volunteer to their.
I'm sorry, what is it, especially?
As a volunteer to their, maybe, you know, but it's so much easier having in-person meetings and participating in person, it seems like the more inviting choice than.
Counselor, Pesteza and then council.
Um just to take this sort of to an extreme, so with that, but if we had a counselor who who I guess won an election and found it particularly challenging to get to meetings, could it just be okay if they just plan to attend remotely, or that's beyond what we're talking about?
Well, I think that's, that is kind of what we're talking about. Um and that's, that's a decision you all need to make, where to draw that line, if you're going to draw a line at all.
Also Perry Miller?
Uh just that, I mean, again, just putting a number in here also sort of implies that we're going to be in charge of like keeping track of how many meetings someone attends remotely, which I mean, I don't know who would keep track of that. That would be a lovely part of Hector's job or or something like that. Um it just seems, I think that there's a better way to formulate this, and I just, I don't know. That number five just seems kind of random.
Counselor Pesteza?
I'm sort of playing the devil's advocate here, but because I've seen in a um commission where there was a pretty strong argument that just don't have to appear in person, it should be perfectly fine to just appear um at all the meetings remotely. And so in in this case, it's wasn't necessarily based on, you know, any you know, physical or other challenges, it was just prefer not to, was my understanding. So do we need, I mean, is that an option or do we need to have some way to encapsulate and say, well, you you can't just prefer not to show up in person. There has to be some sort, I don't know, it just feels like it could be dicey. I mean, we assume every goodwill, but that's not always the case. We, I think we've been pretty fortunate here.
It had, the the issue has come up in some other cities where a council member just doesn't participate. And and finally, um in some cases that. Say that again.
Uh doesn't participate or just doesn't participate in person?
Doesn't participate at all.
Oh.
Uh and uh and I don't know about, I don't know of any experience lately about not participating uh in person, but there have been cases where, of course, recall has been uh uh addressing somebody who's not showing up at all. Uh in some other cases, the city council took action before there was a recall. Uh and and tried to oust uh a non-active elected official. And for that was part of the reason I I thought something in here would be helpful, some kind of limitation. So that you have some basis for making a decision. Um but but that's up to you all.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Um I don't want to get too wordsmithy, but what if we included some type of language around, you know, counselors should make an effort to attend meetings in person. If they're not able to, they can attend remotely. I mean, at least that puts the intention in there. Again, rather than keeping track of a specific number of times.
Counselor Pesteza?
Yeah, um I guess I'm circling back to what I'm maybe starting to understand what your original intention was. You know, because since we can override it essentially, it in some way that sort of is the safe goal too, because if someone is voted in and they have real issues and they can't get to in-person meetings, we can just discuss it, we can vote on it, and we can allow it to happen. So if we put a number in, we can override it. So maybe it's like half the meetings or, you know, whatever it would be. But um I was just thinking maybe that is the easiest solution.
Council buyers?
Well, if our charter only requires us to have one regular meeting a month, five is just under the meetings, your point.
Five, why the heck are we meeting twice a month?
It's 12 months, it's tw- it's 24 meetings a year, right? Or thereabouts, I think it's 26.
Well, and to that point, it seems like we need to decide, are we going to be meeting twice a month? Is that what we're doing? And just put it in the charter or do we just say, well, we really only have to meet once a month and don't we meet twice a month?
Twenty-four.
Well, the the what the charter provides is the baseline, and you can obviously go beyond that. And often you do even more than you have to regular meetings and frequently you have a special meeting or a separate study session or a separate exec- executive session. And I would think what you would want, wh- wh- whatever, if you put in any sort of limitation or any sort of uh requirement or approval by the council, it should apply to all the meetings. I mean, if you if you miss uh ju- just meeting your reg- just me missing your regular meetings might not mean uh put it, you uh you you might have four different meetings in a month. You have had several recently. And if somebody's not participating in any of the o- any of those, that can be a problem for your decision-making.
I just want to clarify that we're talking about, I think, two different things. Nonparticipation, I think, is one thing, and attending either virtually or in person is another.
True.
And um so, I mean, we're, we're watching before our very eyes in House 2560 or 90 or whatever it was. That, you know, things are changing uh with the virtual world. Um we're allowing residents to participate equally, whether they're here or whether they're online in the same mechanism. Um so I do think that there might be some room to talk about thresholds for participation, because I think that is the point. I mean, if you're, if you're not getting the job done, um there should be um some thresholds around that. And I, and I know that there, at one point in time, there were some around absenteeism and things like that. How many, how many meetings you could miss um that were unexcused? So and I I what I'd like to do is just keep us rolling, because we've got 15 more minutes. Let's put a pin in this one and come back to it. Um I think there's been some thoughtful discussion around this and some differing ideas. Um maybe with some time, we can come back with some more clarity around it. But I uh I definitely think what we, what we learned from this piece of the conversation is that participation is really what we're focused on. And um and the ability to participate. Um and whether or not we actually see a problem with the ability to participate through Zoom meeting. Personally, I hate zooming in. It's hard for me. But that might not be everybody's experience. So um presiding from Zoom is super challenging. Anyway. So let's go ahead and carry on. Um and and we will come back to this issue.
Okay, and then on to the top of page four. Uh well, let me see, I've got different page numbers here. Attendance by staff, I'm looking at G right now. And uh I guess the question is that, is it reasonable to expect all all uh
Are we talking about G? I just want to say here is an example of what I was talking about earlier. We once had a city manager, for example, that was being investigated um for breaking, for violating like law. And um so we had the HR attorney attending the meetings and excusing the city manager. Um so there are cases when um when not everybody is at, is attending or participating at all of the meetings. And uh so I think we just need to clarify that so that we have the ability to to conduct business accordingly.
Okay, so I can see uh that requires a change in the language here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, moving on then to um H, which involves the public participation and gets us more deeply into these questions about hybrid participation. That's where my proposal is to move away from this language and go to the set of questions I handed out to you and that I'll put up on the screen in just a moment. Uh I'm gonna find them.
You want mine? You want to share? I can share with all of them.
I have it here somewhere.
Counselor Gray, can you hear us now?
Yeah, I can. Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Gray, how long has it sound, how long do you think the sound?
Well, it was when the, um, screen share started. So this conversation about the, uh, questions, the.
Oh, about these set of questions?
Yes.
So what we're talking about now, for the record, is just uh, speaker request forms, tiny. What, what applies for, uh, live audience also applies for online audience. And what, what degree do we mention that?
I do, uh, you know, want to give Hector a chance to weigh in here about what's possible and not possible. Um, I, because I'm not sure and I certainly this technical side of things, uh, I'm not up on. But do you have anything to add about this question of speaker request forms? Would it be possible? I think as Counselor Panamroff was suggesting that we don't require handing in the speaker requests forms, whether it's online or in person, before the meeting begins. Is that, am I stating that right?
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the times where people walk in the door to be at the meeting. They want to speak and they sign, sign up at that.
You don't want to cease that process.
I don't want to cease that process because I, I feel like that's asking too much. It would hurt community.
I just want to make sure we technically can do that. If we, if we haven't made arrangements ahead of time for not just observing, but actually providing input online, can we do that at the beginning of the meeting?
It's cumbersome, but we, we can do it. We start preparing for the meeting about three o'clock. So we do leave our computers and, and are not near our email. So the cutoff is there for, uh, for that cover up or preparation for the council meeting.
Counselor Pesteza and then Counselor Byers?
Um, well, really two things. One is like so many of these hybrid, you know, questions and concerns, you know, on the one hand, if you're, if you're attending online, right? You know, the agenda ahead of time. In some ways you have days to turn in a request form versus someone who's coming in person who has to do it here. At least that's my understanding. They have to do it here. So that's sort of, so it's sort of a double edged sword, right? It, you know, it's hard for them to do it in these hours, but they could do it a day or two ahead of time if they know they're going to come. And the other thing is, I mean, the, the request forums are coming by email and we've all got computers. Do we just need a computer so that you can come prepared? Don't worry about it. And when the meeting starts, sit down, look at your email, see if anyone had come in. I mean, to me, that's potentially a simple solution. I could be missing something. So, so those are my two points.
Counselor Byers?
Yeah, I, Counselor Pesteza, second point was one I was going to ask about as well. And then my second question was, does the fact that staff is unavailable to check email mean that that at the end of the extent of reasonably possible in this scenario?
Well, we might, we might make that argument. Again, I, that phrase hasn't been interpreted by a court yet. But if, if we were to be told, we really just can't do that without more advanced notice uh, ahead of the council meeting itself. Uh, that would be a pretty good argument. I think that it's not reasonably possible. But I actually, I'm hearing Hector saying it's a little complicated, but we probably can do it.
Counselor, uh, Hector?
Uh, I'd like to make a note, you know, I just thought of the, it's, the city reporter doesn't have to be the only person to check the public testimony email. But we have other staff and of course our city manager as well. So as the city reporter is preparing for the council meetings, we could have other staff check in, check the email. And that's possible. Uh, the email account can be shared with various staff. So there's, there's a, like Counselor Peseo was saying, there is a possibility that, you know, it's an easy, easy fix, but there are other fixes that we can implement as well.
One thing, uh, that I thought of when I was talking to Gary about this issue is, um, if it's in the order of our business in the rules to have roll call, then make an announcement for any speaker request forms, both from the audience and from the, uh, the online audience. Um, allow those speaker request forms up to the point that we get to speakers heard on non-agend items, which is what we've been doing uh, in the meeting and works well. Um, and then cut it off at that point. It gives both parties equal access at the point that we get to non-agenda. At the point we get to non-agenda, I could definitely, um, I mean, it, it could be the practice or the procedure to ask to check online. Do you have speaker request forms? That means looking at the paper and online and then cutting it off at that point. If that's technically doable, um, then my request is as the presiding officer, um, it is difficult to follow the agenda while you're also wanting to participate in the meeting. So I would want to see that on the agenda, that, that announcement would come as item number two.
Okay. Uh, well, I think we're running out of time. And I will work on revisions to, to, uh, that provision about advanced notice. Uh, and in your next iteration, uh, of the proposed council rules, I'll, I'll have some language for you to consider.
I have one recommendation. So the one thing that got us in the weeds the last time we were and, and it, it's infamous how long it took us to get through the last council rules thing was that the, the revisions came back to us every single time. And, and it got revisited and revisited and revisited. My, my suggestion, unless the council sees it differently, would be to just hold the revisions to the final copy. Let's just keep going through it. And then make all the revisions on one copy and then we'll go through that final copy. Then it goes to the council agenda where the community can weigh in on it. We can hear from the community on it and adopt it. Honestly, the last time was.
I like, I like that suggestion from my standpoint too. So.
Um, does that, does anybody object to that? Uh, Counselor Perry Miller?
Just really quickly, when we come back to this, can we start at H, public participation, just at the very top? Because I had a couple of other things, but we just didn't get to them.
Sure.
Great. Thanks. Great conversation, everybody. Thank you so much. We're going to go ahead and, uh, close the study session at six forty-six, take a three minute break. A bio break and we'll commence the council meeting at six, actually, we'll, we'll, we'll take a four minute break and, and start at six fifty.